Good morning, if your honor, please. Excuse me. My name is Bob Boston, member of the Nashville Bar, and along with the attorneys that are reflected on the cover sheet of the brief, I represent the appellate BFI Waste Management Systems of Tennessee. I'd like to reserve three minutes of my time, if I may.
Three minutes for rebuttal?
Yes, sir. The appeal before you today relates to the denial of expansion of a landfill permit down in Rutherford County. This is not an area that two members of this panel haven't addressed as recently as August of last year. Judge Clement, in a prior case with Judge Coke in 2007, addressed a different aspect of it that I'll cover in my comments. I feel thus somewhat chagrined about telling you why the case should be reversed based upon you having ruled on at least a similar statutory scheme less than, right out of a year ago. The, this case was described, with Chancellor Perkins, as unique five different times in his opinion. It's procedurally and substantively unique, both of which are important to the outcome of it. My client contends two significant errors were made, and those are the two I'm going to touch upon in my argument today, even though the briefing sets out all of the deficiencies. There are 305 pages of briefing, with reply briefs and otherwise-
Oh, we know.
...have presented to you. I think we all owe the court an apology, but we did our best to present a relatively complicated matter, consistent with two statutory schemes that govern it. The first, the court, the board, and then the court erred in not properly applying the roles of a Board of Review for a landfill expansion and/or permission, and the Tennessee Department of Environment and Commerce, excuse me, in conservation, as to what its role is. It conflated the two, and it resulted in an adverse decision that should be reversed to deny my client's application for an expansion of a long-existing landfill down there. That's the crux of the problem. The court and the board erred in doing the jobs that they, that allowing, the interpretation of the jobs that the board is supposed to do and TDEC is supposed to do. The second error that occurred, and I'm going to talk about these in reverse order in just a moment, is that the procedural posture of this case allowed the board to take two bites at the same apple, when the jurisdictional limit is one. There is a jurisdictional limit that provides an application for an expansion is to be accepted and resolved within 90 days. That's in the statute. That didn't occur. Two hearings were held, two different bodies of evidence were provided, and a decision was made twice, one July of 2021, the original decision, then one months later after the second hearing.
Counsel, was an objection raised to the second hearing?
I'm sorry?
Was an objection raised to the second hearing?
When, if you're, Judge, remember, if you will, this first hearing was done, and then it goes to Chancery Court on the appeal. That's when the issue occurred for the second hearing. My client wrote a letter to the board that says, "We contest this issue." Second, it was raised with the Chancery Court. You shouldn't be allowing this occur. So it was objected to twice. There is a, in one of the opinions, and I believe it's Judge Bennett's opinion in the Waste Management case, the opinion states, "My client has to raise the objection at the first opportunity," but it doesn't say where that first opportunity was. Here, in this case, it was raised at the first opportunity, which was in Chancery Court, and when we told the board we objected to it. Those are two places it was objected to.
Is it your position-
If your honor, please, there was no question about the issues that were coming forward. Remember, the board and the city of Metro, excuse me, the city of Murfreesboro, which was allowed to intervene by Chancellor Perkins, were well on notice of what was occurring. We didn't want to go back. They were full participants in that discussion.
So is it your position that 4-5-322E really doesn't even apply in these types of cases, that a chancellor could never avail themselves of this opportunity to send it back for additional evidence that got missed in the case? Is that your position, or you're just saying it worked wrong in this case?
I've been saying two things, Judge McBrer. It worked wrong here, but the grounds that the chancellor allowed it to go back don't apply in this situation, and here's why. Under the, remember, the case law says that the, the statute says, "The Uniform Administrative Procedures Act" doesn't apply to proceedings at the board level. The Uniform Administrative Procedures Act does apply at an appeal of that decision, but what the chancellor did in his order, when he sent it back and said, "Whatever needs to happen can happen," is basically what his terms were. He didn't direct the board to do anything. He didn't direct my client to do anything. But when he sent it back, he's pulling from a statute that only applies to judicial review, not to the underlying administrative decision. And what happened was, when it went back, the underlying administrative decision was supplemented and modified and changed. And that's where the statute, the UAPA, doesn't permit you to go back and do that. So I do contend that the chancellor erred, excuse me, the chancellor erred when pulling-
Okay, so expand on that a little bit for me, because I'm not quite understanding, then, under your view, how subpart E works in this circumstance? How should it work in this? What are the circumstances where a chancellor would go, "I need to avail myself an E"? Give me an example.
After it gets to, after it gets confirmed in the Chancery Court, the record is complete, the administrative record is supposedly complete, but something was omitted, something wasn't included in it. The chancellor can come back and ask for a supplementation. Where is that document? When was it provided? A procedural-type thing, that's what the UAPA is supposed to do. It gives the reviewing court, the Chancery Court, the ability, on her or his review, to consider things. It doesn't allow it to go back and redo it at the administrative level.
But E seems to be broader than that, because one of the things you have to show is why it was not presented before to be able to supplement, right? I mean, so-
Even if I'm in error in answering the court's question, there was no finding in this record. There was no suggestion that all the supplementation that was done, second time around, couldn't have been done and provided the first time, which would have been an issue potentially, but never got to that point.
And then, under your conception, if you acknowledge that E part can play a role in these types of appeals, you would have to do it within 90 days, though, you're saying, because you can't, you can't get past the legislature's decision that a decision's got to be made in 90 days, or it's approved?
Your honor, please, I couldn't agree more with you on that point, because the language says "shall." It shall be done. The board, the record reflects, the board knew it had to be done in 90 days, because they set the hearing on the 90th day. They knew at that point their application, my client's application, was complete. It was done. It was ready. It was supported by the application, a presentation, the plan itself, comments that were made, and that was enough to time. The, this court's opinion, that, and this court's opinion that Judge Kane wrote, I think is back in 2007, it's cited in the brief, I think it's consolidated, it's interesting in this case, the major cases all have a very limited number of parties, because they're all the waste management companies, and they're all the municipalities or the counties. So you don't have Smith versus Jones versus Johnson versus-
You can't say the waste management case in this, in this area.
And I get them confused. But Judge Kane's opinion, back in 2007, established that, if I was using a bridge analogy, in spades, what he said was, "You can't find authority in the statute or in the law that allows an extension of a jurisdictional 90-day period." And that would be consistent with statutory construction. The statute says 90 days. That's what applies. He did a good job, respectfully, as courts always do, defining why that is. He analyzed the issue. That case is important for the 90-day jurisdiction issue.
So if we agree with you that the court erred procedurally here, under, in availing themselves in subpart E, why couldn't we just go and say, "Okay, we're going to ignore everything that happened after that. We're going to just look at the original decision and see if that passes muster under the standard review"?
I struggled with that question last night, as to why he couldn't, and here's why. Once there's the second bite of the apple that's done, you don't know, if your honor, please, what influenced it. You don't know what input, input or importance was there. We have no idea what persuaded the board to go back and say, "We reaffirm our original decision," because that's what the board tried to do. The board tried to go back and say, "Even though we've had a second hearing, even though hundreds of pages of documentary evidence and discussion occurred, we still think we were right the first time." That's what the 90-day jurisdictional limit would prevent. You just can't go back and do it, because we can't turn it back. If, respectfully to the, to the part, my adversary's position, it could have been done right if they had approached it the way they were supposed to and stopped. The appeal then goes to Chancery Court and ended. But remember what happened? The city intervened. The city intervened. Chancellor let him do that, brought in additional evidence, and asked to go back to supplement the record. That's what my client doesn't think you can do at the administrative level without violating the, without violating the 90-day rule.
But the statute clearly contemplates the city and counties being parties to these things, so why not let them intervene?
Because it changed, because it abrogates and wipes out the 90-day jurisdictional limit. If they had done it the first time around, perhaps that's the case. But if your honor, please, recall that to find a ground to go back, part of the, part of the law says, "You have to have a basis to do it," which one of the bases is, "Could you have, was the information available first time around?" All this could have been provided. In addition, what was provided, if your honor, please, and this is one of my final points, it's corollary to what you just asked, what was provided, when they went back, we contend is not substantial and material evidence. It's hyperbole and discussion. Recall, the decision was based, if you compare what was presented, to contest my client's position, it was a document, and I think it was called Supporting Documentation. It was an unsworn statement in writing by one of the board members named Donna Barrett, conscientious citizen, I'm sure, but what she provided was simply a discussion of, and I'm going to say it this way, things, things that she thought were important. It's unsworn, there is no evidentiary support for those, and they were considered and then became part of the basis for the board's decision. I ask, I query the court on this one. What would have happened if I had been at that hearing, if I was concerned citizen, and if I was at the hearing, and I simply said, "Taking everything Ms. Barrett has just given you, put the word 'not' in front of each of those statements, or 'not so,'" where is the substantial material evidence that is, that supersedes my observations and my perspective versus hers? So what was even provided was insufficient to support it when the court's decisions, including the one that you and Judge Bennett were on, says must be substantial and material evidence to support the contest?
I know your time is up, counsel, but I want to ask this question during your main part of the argument, so that everybody can get a chance to respond to it. One of the things that has been cited to us for support for the board's decision here is Solid Waste Master Plan for Middle Tennessee, 2019. It's Appendix C. And one of the things that, that gets pointed out here is that it anticipates the closing of this landfill. So, you know, it seems like it's doomed from the start under this. Should a solid waste master plan for Middle Tennessee be part of the consideration here? And if so, why, or if not, why not?
Well, the solid waste management plan, the terms of and conditions, has to be considered as part of it.
Has to be considered, okay.
It has to be. That's actually the starting point for the board's, board's decision, Judge McBrer. The board only has four different places that it can contest an expansion. They're set out, by the way, on page 38 of our brief. They're in part of the statute. And so you have to compare those things to the plan. Yes, it has to be a part of it. What the board did, in summarizing, I'm, I'm, I am out of time, time on this, all of the things that are before you in this record, first time around or even the second time around, are relevant, important, societal and civic issues that should be considered. My client deals with a very critical portion of the infrastructure of a community, and that's a landfill or a solid waste disposal facility. But they all have to be decided at TDEC.
Thank you.
TDEC is where this should go next, after the, after the court reviews. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Are you splitting your argument?
Good morning, Your Honor. We are. We'd like to split, I'd like to take 10 minutes of the appellate time, please, allocate the remaining five minutes to Lisa Helton, who represents the city of Murfreesboro. Yes, sir.
That'll be fine.
All right. Thank you, Your Honor. Your Honor, my name is John Rogers. I represent the Central Tennessee Regional Solid Waste Planning Board. It's our position that the court should affirm the trial court's denial of BFI's application to expand the Middle Point landfill. We can do so on a number of different and independent grounds. Board received extensive evidence demonstrating that BFI's requested expansion is inconsistent with the region plan. The board's decision gave multiple, independent, and severable grounds for denying BFI's application, many of which BFI has not challenged in any way on appeal. Board's decision was supported by substantial and material evidence. It was not arbitrary and capricious. It did not violate any constitutional or statutory provisions, and it did not exceed the board's authority. In the court's own words, the Solid Waste Management Act from 1991 provides for local input on solid waste management. It limits judicial review to a narrow and deferential standard, and indicates that courts should defer to the board's interpretation of its own plan. So, Your Honors, under this framework and based on the record, we believe that the board's decision should stand.
So if I'm looking at the regional plan, you're saying, "That's grounds enough here. We don't have to go any further." So if you're pointing me to exactly the parts of the regional plan I can look at and say, "Granting an extension here is contrary to the plan," am I looking primarily at 6.4? Is that what I'm looking at?
Yes, sir. I think so. The, the plan itself, you know, details what the concept is. Going forward, it's a statutorily-directed, legislatively-directed idea for each region to lay forth what its plan is for the next 10 years, for the next five years, for region, for solid waste. And that's exactly what the board has done in constructing its region plan, is we, each region, this region, has said, "We're not going to, we're getting away from Class 1 landfills. We're moving to-"
Okay. So where does it say "that" in the region? Where do I look for that sort of language? Because I, I mean, that's a different reading than I have. I mean, I'm looking at 6.4, and I don't see anywhere saying, "We're going away from Class 1."
So, so, Your Honor, the-
Landfills.
So the region plan is made up of updates, and it's certainly been updated since 2001. In, recently in 2020, Rutherford County, for example, which, which, as, as you know from the briefing, is now virtually the sole user in region of Middle Point landfill. Rutherford County, in their 10-year update, provided information that now composes part of the plan, that says, "Middle Point has less than 10 years of capacity in its current configuration." This is from, reading from the 10-year plan, Your Honor. "When it closes, Rutherford County will have to have other options in place. Landfills, landfill use will be needed along with non-landfill solutions." Cedar Ridge in Marshall County has nine years of capacity left. By County, in Montgomery County, has 32 years of current capacity. But there are also currently no other landfill space in Middle Tennessee without expansion or new developments. That's true. But therefore must include new processing solutions. We've got to get away from throwing our trash on the ground and covering it with dirt.
But that last clause that the sentence you threw in there is additional. That's, you're reading more into this plan than's actually there. I mean, the statute directs the board to match up the application to what is in the plan.
Yes, sir.
And, I mean, I see where it's, it's encouraging disposal of waste in other ways than landfill.
Correct.
But it doesn't exclude the possibility that landfill would continue to be a part of the process?
It, it certainly doesn't, but I think the clear intent is, from, from, from everything going forward, from 2001 going forward, the clear intent is, and vision, that Middle Point is going to close, and that we've got to get other things in place. We've got to have other solutions. And they've, they've explored these solutions. They've, they've actually taken concrete measures to implement these solutions. I, I know it's not part of the record, but the city of Murfreesboro, Rutherford County, has, has constructed a transfer station. These processes are in place going forward.
I mean, I, but, I mean, we're limited to the record here. And we've already got an issue about how this record was supplemented, and, I mean, would you agree that under 4-5-322E, really the only supplementation here is stuff that should have been or was available at the original hearing? It can't be post-hawk information?
Yes, sir. I do agree with that. I agree that-
And didn't some of that type of information come in here? I mean, I'm worried about the precedent this sets for what a Chancery Court can do. I mean, it just seemed like they threw additional, a lot of additional information here, and it has the, the potential to totally upend the clear time constraints to the legislature imposed on a board.
Well, so the 90-day thing, I do think it's a bit of a red herring, ultimately because we have plenty of information in the initial hearing from June of 2021 that shows plenty of, of evidence that indicates this application is inconsistent with the plan as it exists today. But, but, you know, going forward, we can identify these, 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 these solutions and, and other measures by which we can implement and move away from Class 1 landfills. Your Honors, the, as, as I think I've indicated, the, the briefs have identified a number of different dispositive issues that BFI failed to raise or preserve on appeal. And the board largely relies on its briefing, but I do want to emphasize one core point. The court, as I kind of indicated, could, could pre-termit all of the other issues in this case and simply affirm the trial court's decision on any one of these several bases for the board's denial, each of which the board has emphasized more than one time that they're all severable and independent, and that BFI has failed to address several of those in any of this appeal. BFI acknowledges that its appeal needed to challenge every basis, but it failed to actually challenge every basis. Probably most importantly, BFI never once addressed the board's denial on the basis that expanding the Middle Point landfill was inconsistent with the plan, and that the region plan, Your Honors, indicates that the priorities for the region in the next five years are to increase recycling opportunities. BFI also meaningfully, never meaningfully addressed other bases for denial, such as the expansion itself is unnecessary, it's not environmentally acceptable, and it's not cost-effective. Solid Waste Management Act requires that the region plan create, region create a plan and submit it to TDEC. We know that. TDEC approves the plan. The act permits the board to reject the application if the board determines it's not consistent. Section 9.2.1 of the plan provides four primary, but not exclusive, questions to evaluate the proposed expansion. Is it environmentally acceptable? Is it cost-effective within the region? Is it cost-effective disposal without sacrificing environmental acceptability? Is it designed to serve out-of-region waste? That would not, that would not be considered to be suitably located to serve the, the region. And also the cost impact for, for the infrastructure, roads, water, for bringing this out-of-region waste into the county. So these analytic criteria, they highlight certain themes. Questions one, two, and three, cost effectiveness, environmental acceptability.
Where does the region plan address infrastructure requirements?
Your Honor, I believe it, the infrastructure requirements, I believe, fall in the cost-effectiveness of it. The cost, the, the cost of constructing the infrastructure, maintaining the infrastructure, roads, sewer development, all that falls within that one provision of the plan that deals with cost effectiveness.
You're out of time, but I want to ask you, ask opposing counsel during the argument about the solid waste master plan for Middle Tennessee. How does that document relate to the region plan? Is that a subpart of it, or is that a component of it? I mean, what, how, what's the relation between the two?
Yeah. I will candidly tell you, Your Honor, I'm, I'm not as familiar with that master, master plan we've dealt, from a region standpoint, with the region plan. I do, I think, from a board's perspective, we, we are, we follow, we, we look at this, the, the region plan itself, perhaps just like the-
But I noticed the master plan is one of the things you cited too in your brief for this idea that Middle Point would be closing. It's the, it's Rutherford County, the city of Murfreesboro, partnered to hire Gresham, Brickner, and Bratton to consult and present alternatives for solid waste management in anticipation of Middle Point's landfill's closure.
Yes, sir. So I think perhaps just like, just like the counties, Warren County, Cannon County, Coffee County, and Rutherford County, they each provide updates to the plan, and that becomes part of the region plan. I think just like that, the region plan probably complements and supplements the state-
So that's a component of it?
Yes, sir. I believe so. Thank you, Your Honor.
Good morning, Your Honors. My name is Lisa Helton, and I represent the city of Murfreesboro, along with Adam Tucker, the city attorney. I'd like to use my time to address some of the questions that the court has asked this morning. Your honors asked, "Where is it exactly in the plan that we're no longer going to be using Middle Point, and we're not going to be disposing of our trash within the region?" I would cite to Volume 15, page 85. It says that new landfills will be located outside of the region. Page 84, it says, "At this time, no new Class 1 landfills are planned in the region." Page 84, it also talks about future disposal options will be at other private facilities, including Waste-to-Energy Facility. And I want to also explain that this plan in this case may be a bit different from the other cases that this court has seen, because this region determined that it would have its master plan from 2001, and then it would actually allow its different counties to develop their own plans, and those plans would be part of the overall plan. And so I would point the court to the Rutherford County 2020 update, which, Rutherford County really was the last county using this landfill, as the courts may have seen in the record. All of the other counties were no longer using this landfill, except I think it was one other county, maybe 5% of their trash went to the landfill, but Rutherford County was the last one using it, so.
Would that have been true as of the initial hearing?
Yes, Your Honor. So I would point the court to page 679 of the record, which is the Rutherford County update, and it talks about how they're looking at using either Cedar Ridge or By County. And I think really what you see from the plan and you see from the region members' updates is this desire to no longer dispose of trash within the region. There's a desire to no longer use Middle Point and to no longer- There's a desire to no longer use Middle Point and to no longer frankly live with the issues and the burdens that Middle Point has been putting on the community. And so the plan is not to use Middle Point. That is the plan. I, I also want to address the supplementation. I want it to be entirely clear that the board did rule on the application within 90 days. It did render its decision in 2021 within 90 days. So then, its appeal to the Chancery Court, the court, before the court, every single party asked to change the record in some way. BFI filed a motion. We filed a motion. The board filed a motion. And the court, in its judgment, exercised its ability to remand back to the board, believing that the board was the most appropriate authority to determine of all of this stuff, what should go into the record. And I want to point out that in our motion, when we asked to supplement, we did raise that there were new materials that we could not have presented previously because we didn't know about them. And they related to this aluminum waste reaction that's ongoing in the landfill and had not been disclosed to the board. So we did satisfy the statute. The court granted the motion, and it was sent back. I think it's also very important to note that when we were back before the board, BFI never raised a complaint or an issue about supplementing. Never. Yes, it sent a letter to the board. The letter said, I thank you for the opportunity to supplement. So under both invited error and waiver, BFI affirmatively asked the board to supplement and never once raised an issue. When we get back to the trial court, the trial court set two different deadlines to file whatever motion you think is appropriate about the reconstituted record. BFI allowed both of those deadlines to pass without filing anything. And so we suggest that both waiver and invited error, the reconstituted record should remain intact. I had other remarks prepared, but I just want to close. I know I have 30 seconds. We asked the court to address our cross-appeal in this case. The trial court's reversal of the board's decision severely limited what the board could consider in its environmental acceptability analysis. And we believe that that ruling is in contradiction to this court's guidance in 2023. It's not the court's rule to second-guess the plan, flex or modify the plan, evaluate one section over the other, or even be concerned with the propriety of the substance of the plan. And so by the trial court, essentially redlining the plan and saying, well, you can't consider odor. You can't consider the waste. You can't consider the, the impact on the public. The trial court did exactly what this court said not to do. And all of these cases go to that same court. And so we really need guidance in that respect. And I see my time is up.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
In my final three minutes, I'll address the panel's questions as best I can. One of the questions was, just to deal with, Mr. Rogers had stated, there needs to be local input by the county. There needs to be local input by the county. True. But where? TDEC, not at the board, not at the board of review level. The four things the board of review can consider don't include the things the board did consider. Simple put. If you look at the, there's a quote at the very end of Judge Koch's opinion in Waste Management versus Solid Waste Region Board. What it says, it was dealing with this very issue. And it said, in that case, "Waste management's request to expand the southern landfill may be denied only if inconsistent with the board's waste management plan." That's the limitation that you hit on. And it says, necessity, compatibility, and desirability notwithstanding. That's what TDEC exists for, to handle those three things. If TDEC is not allowed to participate in the process to determine those things, which is what the city and the board asked, asked the Chancery Court to consider, the entire state statutory scheme that has a role for boards but a role for TDEC is turned on its head. It becomes unsustainable. It becomes unjustifiable. It becomes unpredictable because every solid waste board in the state can do the same things. And it undermines what TDEC exists for. TDEC is the subject matter expert under the statutory scheme. It has been denied to date the ability to exercise its authority, which it is supposed to do.
But some of these things, though, are issues that TDEC has not taken on. In fact, I'm thinking about the odor issue here. So the, you know, residents complain about odor, and they're directed to TDEC, and TDEC says, no jurisdiction over that. So why wouldn't the board consider a thing?
I've always wanted to use this in argument, red herring, red herring. What is, what does the odor stem from? The things that are occurring in the landfill, which are within operation and regulatory issues? Is it gas? Is it the wind? Is it the humidity? Or things like that? Those things are regulatorily driven to TDEC. And second, Judge McBrer, if in fact, TDEC has not done it, not done it now, why does that imply it won't in the future, based on the record, when it hasn't been presented to TDEC in this, this application? Third point, it allows, it allows the city, and it allows the board and any citizen that wants to appear before TDEC to raise that very issue. If TDEC has denied that, the statutory scheme doesn't work, and we end up with decisions that are supposed to be limited to four different aspects by board of reviews, not being limited to those. They become open season.
So the, the residents just need to press the issue with TDEC, is what you're saying?
I don't think, if they want to, if they need to, you can assume that my client will oppose those if in fact it has grounds to do so. But that's why TDEC exists. It's, it is in the record, the TDEC process lasts about a year, and it's multiple hearings and multiple things that you're designing. It has a whole process. It has a regulatory book that has thousands of pages in it that govern that. Thank you. I'm out of time.
Thank you. Thanks to all of you.